Just have an addendum for the budget. No? Okay, okay. Somebody told me that. Where did I get that from?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's five o'clock and we're getting ready to convene. We'll open the meeting. Call it a roll, please, or call order. Mike, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know Wes is here, but call the roll, please.
I saw him. He was here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hogue?
Here.
Councilmember Kellum?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison? Mayor pro Tim Raymond?
Here.
Okay, our first order is on the agenda is the 20th of July, 2021, and this is our public budget workshop. And we have public participation, and I do have two cards. The first one was Chris Cerini. Come up to the podium, sir, if you would go and speak. Your name and where you live, please.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Are you not sure?
Good. Well, my name is Chris Cerini. I am a resident on Oak Lane here just right down the street. And I know that there were some talks about paving the road over on Oak Lane. It seemed to be it's all dirt right now, which on one hand I'd be grateful for. I would really like to, I'd really like to see that road paved. My car bottoms out on it every time I drive up and down my road. The other thing is, though, is about a sidewalk, and I was really concerned about where the sidewalk would go. I guess plans are right now sidewalk would go on my side of the road and also my neighbor's side of the road. And that doesn't seem to work. My car won't fit in driveway. Half my car would be pretty much in the sidewalk all the time. So if my, my opinion in the matter would be, yes, that's great. Let's do a road. Or we just not do a sidewalk altogether, or talk about maybe putting a sidewalk on the other side of the street. So that's kind of my opinion in the matter, and I kind of want to do, just put that out there and say my opinion on the, on the matter. Hopefully it sways some decisions. So I'm also interested in not paying for a road. So that's just me, though. In the meantime, it would be nice to know when the road would actually be paved. If it was in this year's budget, that would be fantastic. Otherwise, I may get a couple loads of gravel and start fixing some holes myself because I don't want to keep replacing shocks. So that's kind of where I'm at. So I guess that's it for me.
Okay, sir, thank you. We'll be working that.
I just wanted to mention that I think it's a very good idea that if and when we do decide to do this, we hold a public meeting for the residents out there on the design of Oak Lane.
It can happen. Okay, we have another card, Michelle Sales. Sir, Oak Lane.
A resident on Oak Lane, right beside him also.
Okay, just state your name and please.
We have.
Just state your name for the record, that's all.
Michelle Sales. He pretty much summed it up. First of all, I'm not really sure why Oak Lane needs a sidewalk unless there's something else coming down the line. We would prefer no sidewalk, especially if it's going to be on our yard and take half of our driveway. Doesn't make much sense. Paving it's fine. Our road's not terrible, but the end of the road by Circle K and all that is awful. Beat yourself up coming down through there. So I'm with him. We just wanted to come and have our say in the sidewalk, pretty much.
Well, they'll go through a process and some meetings like the manager said, and it will be public and you can come in. They'll have an engineering setup for you to see and you can.
Yeah, we had a brief meeting and that's why we were here.
Yeah, okay. It'll be public to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, Joe or Joyce Downing?
Yeah, Joyce Downing, 301 Fillmore. I'm here to petition for some thought on the flooding on our street, Fillmore Avenue, to get it on the record. We have been talking about this for years. I know you all know it's not the only place in Cape Canaveral, but it's certainly getting worse in our area. And we are kind of surrounded by new builds that are going on. So for us, it's getting really critical. I have water that comes into my, into my house in a very bad rain. And I know my neighbor, who's also talked to Lenz in another meeting, he is getting water coming into his garage now. So again, nothing's getting better. I know you did some drainage changes last year, but it did not affect us at all. It really has not improved our situation. And we can see where the water that's coming off Orange is just coming all the way down. It's coming through my yard. It's going out the back and it's staying there. So that's our consideration. Thank you.
We're aware of that, I'm sure, Mr. Manager, correct?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, we have a discussion item here for council. We have our budget. We've all had a chance to meet with staff, Mr. Morley, Mr. Delio, and so forth. But anybody, let's, let's just start down. Todd, do you want to do an intro or?
Yeah, if I could just kick it off for us. I did have the pleasure of meeting and speaking with each council member within the last week about the budget. And it is a $33,902,326 balanced budget. Provides for all of the ongoing capital needs that we have currently established, plus all of the items that are identified in the strategic planning retreat as phased in over the years, as we agreed upon while we were accepting that plan, the strategic retreat plan. We have proposed all of this to happen at a rollback rate. The rollback rate proposed is 3.5755. That's the combined millage rate. Staff did, John Staff did a wonderful job on this budget now, including the summary of where other cities are. This is tentative because not all of them have reported yet, but it's shaping up that we're still going to be the fourth lowest in Brevard County with this millage rate. We're seeing a number of the municipalities increasing from their current rate. A couple stack going with rollback, and we are proposing rollback. I did want to caution one thing about the American Rescue Act money that is coming. We understand there's going to be two tranches of this American Rescue Act money coming to the city over the next few years. It's phased, a total of $4.2 million we'll be getting. There are several caveats to this money that we're receiving, such as how you spend it. You can't spend it to reduce debt. You can only spend it on infrastructure projects. Good examples are stormwater and wastewater projects. But another caveat and reason I bring this up is it can't be used to justify a reduction in taxes. So we have to be, we haven't seen all the Ts and Is of this whole thing yet, but we just need to be cognizant that there will be some scrutiny on the issue of if you reduce taxes and then receive this $4.2 million, well, was it because of that that you reduced it? So there, there may be some coming scrutiny to that, and I think that also supports the decision to go to rollback because it's not a tax reduction. It's the same amount as last year. That would, and that's, that's part of the thinking, why we suggested we go to rollback on our millage rate. There are a number of projects in here that we talked about completing. A lot of them are infrastructural projects, the SRF money. That's practically 0% money that we're paying back. It's a line of credit for these projects, like the lift stations that we're doing. It's not money sitting in our bank. We draw it down from the State Revolving Fund when we need it. We pay it back, very low interest. Some of our other notes, for example, paying for the city hall and the fire station, those are 10-year-old notes at less than 2%. That one is, and they'll be paid off within the next, I think, four years, John, if I'm not mistaken. It'll be great to have the city hall paid off in four years and the fire station. That's fantastic. The other projects are short-term debt, nothing's, those like the multi-generational facility or 10-year, 10-year note, also very low interest rates. So we did very well on our capital financing for those projects. And they're all continuing in this budget, and there should be no surprises. Put it all out there for council. We welcome any questions you have. John and his staff are here to talk about anything in particular that they certainly know more about the details than I do. But I really want to thank all the directors, all the, the whole staff for all their good work putting into this budget, and especially John's team. You guys really did a terrific job. So with that, Mayor, I turn it over to the council for any particular questions you might have.
Mickey, I'll just go let you start.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like, the, the budget looks good. There's a few things I have questions about. Mainly, I would like to see Oak Lane project on this year's budget. We've been promising these people a long time to pave. There's a history of Oak Lane, starting in 1982 when Mayor Jamison asked the mayor then, Mayor Murphy, for a petition to pave Oak Lane in 1982. 1999, Ms. Mary Bogus, Bogus spoke on behalf of the Oak Lane to get it paved. In 2007, a letter to the then-mayor Randalls from Mr. Stewart asked about paving Oak Lane. It's been a priority, Oak Lane improvements in 2016, 2017, 2018. It's not a new project. In our last retreat at the strategic planning, we came up with pillars which puts priorities to which projects we want. At that time, when we had our meeting, it wasn't clear what the residents of Oak Lane wanted. And on June 30th, I met with the residents and they were all invited by postcard, telephone or email. The city manager, Todd, was there and Capital Projects, Jeff Retliff, was also there. And there was a positive interaction with the residents. And I think they made it clear to the residents that if and when we get this on the budget, that they're willing to work with the residents on what they want and how they want it done. The main reason I started this quest, besides that the front of the road, the beginning of the road is horrible, and there's been many trucks stuck in the mud, in the rain, and there's residents there can attest to how bad it is. But the business owner there, Jeff Sawyer, who owns, and Daniel has some pictures that we could put up, that owns La Cantina, has been there 27 years. He's a, he's a really good responsible business in our city. And he employs eight to 10 citizens in his restaurant. And since the North Atlantic redo, his business has been flooded six times at great financial cost to him, also displacing his employees with no income during the downtimes of his damaged property. There was a drain in this property before the upgrade of North Atlantic. The city promised a French drain to relieve his flooding. Jeff has been there, Dave Dickey has been there, Todd has been there, and have spoken to Jeff, Mr. Sawyer, about ways to fix this. Because he, and because he built a DIY berm around his building to keep the water from flowing to the sides, you can see it on this picture, he is not ADA compliant, which limits his handicap patrons. There's pictures of Oak Lane on here. Also, I believe that for public safety input, the fire department, if they had to go down this road to, that's rain and that's the mud that turns into a horrible mud pit. There's young families back there now that, that weren't there before, and I think it's a matter of public safety that we pave the road. And like I said, and Todd said, that there, we are willing as a, as a city to negotiate with the residents on how and what they want it. But I believe it needs to be on this year's budget and not kick the can down the road. I see, you know, the paving, we have the presidential plan, which is awesome, a master plan to address the other cities. This is not a presidential street, but it is in dire need of paving. The city has already spent $54,696 on surveying and other things for Oak Lane. There's been a plan in the works for years, and I just think it's time to put it on the budget and get it done for the residents and for the business that it does, his business doesn't flood anymore during storms. There's are some other things, but I would wait, let the other council speak, and then I will come back to some other issues. Thank you. Right, and I think it would have been, you know, if we had known ahead of the strategic planning, that we could have made it one of our priorities had we known that the residents want it, because that was always a problem. Right.
Thank you. And on Oak Lane, yes, that's been going on for a long time, as Councilmember Kellum pointed out. And I think councils on board from the conversations we've had is getting it fixed, so I fully support that. As far as the budget goes, and when I say support that, I've been in the budget for Oak Lane, as Councilmember Kellum said. I think that's a good idea to prioritize that. Just a couple of things clarity that I was recently caught on page 12, the City of Cape Canaveral Consolidated Financial Overview. In the past, and I actually pulled back the previous budget books. Thank you. The column that's amended is usually, correct me if I'm wrong, projected. My question, because I was kind of, and I noticed that the heading changed. That projected tells us kind of where we think we're going to end up. And it's the exact same original and amended, and I was just curious why we got rid of the projected? Because it's very helpful to kind of know how we're going to end the year out.
Yeah, Councilmember Morrison, what we did is, my staff and I, we did a study. What we did is, you know, we, we got a new software program called BSNA. And we're trying to do, to be more efficient, we're trying to do the budget more out of using the software. I mean, that's why we spent the money for the city, for the residents, to do better reporting. And along with that, what we found was we went to other cities, we looked at other cities. And in the past, the way Cape Canaveral did it is, yes, they put, that was the original then, the projected, okay? And what we would do, we would do expected run rates and determine where we think we were going to end up. Other cities use the amended, and I had a talk with my staff, and it is more realistic to use amended than it is projected. Because projected, there are too many variables in projected. Now, we know that if we do budget transfers or things of that nature, we've adjusted those columns because we know how those items are going to be increased and, you know, where we'll be. And that's kind of how we approach it. So the main reason we did it is we followed suit with other cities. We found that it's more effective. We're one of the few cities, if not the only city, that was doing that. Now, that's not to say that was a bad thing. But that, what I've done since I've been here the last eight years is, it's a tremendous amount of work to do a projected on every line item in the budget. And what we found, and I had the folks beside me, my deputy finance director and my accountant, we looked at this and said, you know what? This ain't, this is not being real advantageous to us. So we had a discussion, we looked at the other cities, we studied and says amended is, is much better because, and, and what it means too is it doesn't mean that we're, we're not going to finish on budget. It doesn't mean that we're not going to finish over or under. But we do know the areas we were, we were shown in the budget where we are, we do know we're going to be over or under. And we're using that data instead of throwing all these projections out here, which, how have our projections been over the year? Actually, our projections over the year have been relatively, relatively good. And one thing for sure is, if you look back at previous budgets, we actually end up, you know, sometimes between $400,000 to $900,000 collectively to the, the good. Then our numbers, you know, less than, spent less than we had to. But that's the, but that's the answer to your question. Just through a study we did internally, this makes a lot more sense instead of throwing all these numbers out. And if any of my staff has any other, anything to add, go ahead.
Just that when we have to start the budget, it's so early in the year. So some of these, you know, when we're compiling these and trying to get everything out, it's, it's pretty early in the year too. So it's not, you know, the last two months of the year.
Good, yeah.
And I'll also add on that, that this chart here, the amended and the original are the exact same. But when you start going through the different funds and everything, you'll see differences there. So, and that was, it, yeah, it is, the projected was just kind of a guess based on calculations where this is what we've actually done and what we've actually changed in the budget for you.
Thank you. That makes sense. And I don't, I found, I found that you were usually pretty accurate with your projections. I understand early in the year, and I personally, I found it to be very valuable. So if we're not, if we're going to do this moving forward, my request and count is just to at least know what the year-to-date is. And I think I usually go to the last weekly update whenever y'all do the financial reporting to get it. But I was looking at it the whole time, thinking it was like the last three years, and I just caught that, that change. So makes sense to me. I understand your logic and behind it. And I'll just, next time, think about knowing what the actuals are, knowing that we got, what, three years left in the fiscal year? Or three months left in the fiscal year, and hey, we're 75% of the way on there. And so, yes, that's, and then the increase-decrease was always helpful too, because that's a short way to kind of see how we're doing. And I noticed the difference. This year, we didn't do an increase-decrease. We actually did, we solved it to 100%. And so it was hard for me to see that, that change. And I was reading that as a change, but it's actually just a percentage of the total budget. So it's valuable data as written. I don't want to hear that. But for me, at a quick glance, and I actually ended up sharing this with the citizens, I thought it was measuring change, and I thought that they had the projections in there. But now that I got my arms around how we got here, I know how to find the other.
And the changes are in the individual budgets. And one thing that's unique about city budgets is it's not like, say, a government contract where you're making, you know, let's just say missiles, and you make 50 missiles every month, and you know how much you're spending. You know, you can have a project that is a million dollars, and we can go six months, seven months into the year and say we spent $250,000. It's because the much trucks maybe of a project is actually occurring at the, towards the end of the year. So a lot of the money's going to be spent at the end of the year. And so nothing, it's not even, but there's, to measure things, even on our monthly finances, everything's done based on 12 months because there's no other way to measure. You've got to have some type of measurement tool. But like your revenues, your revenues, communication services taxes and, and state revenues or whatever, well, those are pretty much the same every month. But a lot of other things in here, they go like, they go like this because nothing is consistently the same. Because it's not like, like we're in a manufacturing plant building 10 things every month, you know, so. But I like this. I like the amended, the way it is. And then the individual budgets for the departments show the rate of change. And I think it makes a lot more, more sense. But yes, and thank you, Councilmember Morrison, for complimenting us on how good we were at our project in the past, because I think we did a pretty good job. But Jenny brings up a very good point. You know, when you're in April and May doing this, and you're trying to figure out how much you may spend the rest of the year, you're doing historical calculations and you're doing run rates, so.
Thank you. The, this is, just pointing out, in the 2018-19 actual, so the first column on page 12, that when I was looking at the previous years, trying to get my head around this, like the total revenues and cash forward in that column is $19,453,000. Well, then, when I went back to last year's budget book for the actual column, it's at $25 million. And so I didn't understand why an actual column would change, and I wasn't mixing projections. I could certainly understand why there's change. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. I just want to point out that's a pretty big, significant change. And I did, I don't expect you to have last year's budget book. I have it with me if you want to see what I'm talking about.
No, but we can explain that to you right now. Go ahead.
I believe that, because last year was the first year I did the budget, I believe I accidentally put depreciation included that in last year's, and it should not have been included in this chart.
So is this year's accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize. I did catch that this year when I was doing it.
No, all good.
I was using the audited numbers last year, and when the audit, at the end, they do the journal entries.
Okay.
So I had included that last year.
As long as we know.
So that's a big number.
Okay, thank you. And so the final thing, as far as more just structure and accuracy data on it, is the O and M expenses that we've talked about in the past, budget policy. I didn't go through every single facility, but our, our ordinance talks about having O and M expenses. I know we talked about this in the past, and just as an example of one that jumped out at me is the Cape Center. I didn't see O and M expenses on that one. And I would just question if there are any other ones to look at those two, which is on, in the budget. I think O and M expenses are on page 120. And typically, you put them there. This is the old city hall. For those of you listening, we're going to be, it's proposed to convert this into a culture arts preservation and enrichment center. And ongoing operations and maintenance expenses is really the, I think we need to add that in there, unless I'm missing something.
Let's see. I totally, I totally agree on that. And we could put that in there for you because, you know, what would happen is, is those, those operating expenses, we should be, the Cape Center, of course, has not even started yet, but we can definitely project what those O and M will be, just like we did for you with the multi-generational facility and whatever. So, you know, if that's going to constitute, say, additional services and another employee, we could at least put what the estimate is there, so you know what the impact's going to be.
Yeah.
We can do that for you.
It's important. I think that's why the policy aligns it. So you thought you were going to get out of projections. You're good at it, though. I'm encouraging you. So, yeah, thank you.
So what we'll do, Councilmember Morrison, on CR9 on page 120, is Jenny will go ahead, and we will include that when we present the next budget to you, which will be like September, whatever the first Tuesday is, and September 7th or whatever it is in, in September. So these, but what we're doing here, that's why we're doing the budget workshop. We will adjust these numbers accordingly.
This is the time to get it out.
That is definitely note one. We will have that updated.
And double check. There might be other ones, but I think that was the only one I called.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look through that and any place it warrants operating and maintenance expenses, we will put that in. I don't think, yeah, because there's not many more capital projects of that nature, so.
Thank you. And so as far as the, the budget, it's a big one. This is the biggest budget I think Cape Canaveral's ever passed. And the property taxes are at, I think, record highs as well. And so, and I think COVID didn't set us back as much as we thought, especially if that American recovery money comes in. And so my hope is that if this budget, we're going to spend this much money, is some, shifting a few priorities in here, and wanted to talk to council about it. And last year, I think we got an agreement on a few of these, but I'm just looking, this is an opportunity to, But I'm just looking at this as an opportunity to, um, I reached out. I tried to get citizens input and data and still at the top, which is consistent with the twenty eighteen survey is A one A safety. I know that we, we talk about working, that is not our road. That's a state road. But whatever it takes for us to, um, earmark money, start wedging in, making the improvements that we have right away or the ability to funding legislative efforts to get us higher on the list. Whatever we can, I mean, seeing that just as a line item in our budget would show that we're being intentional. So that's the first one. Sidewalks, uh, our city manager explained to me that there would be an increase in sidewalks. These are essential services that I think we've all driven down Cape Canaveral, especially in the presidential streets. And you see somebody walking right in the middle of the road. And before you get angry, you realize they are walking because there is no sidewalk on that road. Especially on Harris and Avenue at sections. And when you're coming off A one A, a lot of people are kind of just rolling through that hot. And when they're in that hundred block, it can be dangerous for people where there is no sidewalk. So prioritizing sidewalks by A one A on the presidential streets is really important. I think we got about a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty thousand dollars in opportunities for sidewalks. And my hope is that this council gets on board with not putting a number down, but actually figuring out how much money it would take to finish one hundred percent of the sidewalks in the city. And we get behind that number. So, um, my request during this workshop is to figure out whatever the dollar is per average per foot for sidewalk. I know we got a sidewalk master plan. I, if say we're eighty percent complete, what is it to get the other twenty percent done? If it's two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, a million dollars, I'm not saying yes to that number. It would just be helpful to know what that number is and then see what the council wants to do, um, on that. And then the same logic applies with the third thing that I think we agreed on last year, which is streetlights. There's a lot of exciting projects in here. Some of them are what I would call are the nice to haves, not the need to haves. The promenade, some of the leisure projects, things that I think are not in that high priority essential services like A one A safety sidewalks. And the third one is, uh, streetlights. I drove, um, last night and we talked about this last year. Our city manager has done an excellent job communicating the progress of fixing the solar lights on Ridgewood. I think he kind of reached that point to where we can support him more and give, give more funds in this budget to do the same thing, not put fifty-eight thousand dollars a year towards solar lights, which is what I think we have roughly. But to say, how much is it going to cost to have one hundred percent of the lights working in the city? And then we see that number and we say, we want to put, you know, that's one I've, I would more than likely support all of it because before we start building, some of the things that I see in this budget, I don't feel good looking the citizen in the eye and saying, hey, the streetlights don't work. Just last night, I think seven or eight lights were out on Ridgewood Avenue still. And some of them are, there's manufacturing, there's supply chain issues, there's problems. But it's been two to three years now that these lights have been out. And I think we fixed at least four to six. At one time it was fourteen or fifteen out. And like I said, the city manager executed quickly on fixing those. But I'd like to see a, a line item that says this year, let's move that money forward instead of trickling out fifty-eight thousand a year. And let's get it done as soon as possible, um, in, in this next fiscal year. Uh, and then obviously we heard flooding tonight. This is an issue that is continuing to not only flood the streets. I've said, read things where it says, oh, the streets are flooding. No, people's water's going in people's homes. And when people drive by and they're putting off a wake, they're flowing in people's homes. Um, there are sandbags in front of people's doors on Fillmore Avenue. And that right there is something that as a council member, I don't like to see, especially when, yes, we've had hard rains. But without looking at the data, like we, we're going to, especially if we believe that things are changing, those rains are going to continue to come. And again, this is one where staff took immediate action, uh, working with the engineers, put a temporary short-term solution, not a hundred percent guarantee with a pump, but whatever is needed there, whatever comes back to the engineers. I just want to see that funded and fixed before anything else. And a specific example of how to do that is in the capital improvement plan, the central, um, avenue ditch or, uh, just saying that right, yeah, the central avenue job that I think there was a land acquisition that needed to happen. Um, but there was a proposal in a facilities plan about, uh, doing an underground storage, stormwater containers, exfiltration system similar that we did in the ball fields. And if that's a million bucks or whatever it is, like, I'm ready to take a hard look at that. I saw that in next year's line item. Um, it is the, I'm actually looking at the page number one hundred forty-three, central ditch improvements. Um, we've got two hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. And my hope is that if that's for land acquisition, I know we can't strike on that or whatever it is, but we, we maybe get off the idea of doing something off-site, which requires tying up private property. Uh, and we do something right there under the road or in the right of way as the consultants recommend. Um, and I look forward to hearing what comes out of the meetings. But to me, if that central ditch, that flow there is the problem in the basin. Um, I just, I hope this council, we can get that one, uh, prioritized for the flooding. And then as we heard from the, uh, resident tonight, talking about, um, this isn't the only place in the city. Um, I've got photographs in other places where it's happening. It's happening on my street too. And so something's changing, something's not right. Um, and there's multiple solutions, uh, even from a policy perspective, not even budget related that we can do. Whether it's rain barrels, less pavement, green parking, a lot of the things that we pass in our resiliency plan. But this is a hard line item. I think we can improve. Um, looks like police and fire are well-funded and from my understanding, they're, they're okay. That's always a priority. And, um, the roads is my last budget related thing is, I know we, Mayor, you've, I think, been here and seen them pave three times, a few of them. And that's the only thing is, are we planning? One of the things I liked our city manager said early in the process when he first took the job was planning for the roads. And so, um, are we setting money to the side? I don't want to have to take on debt if we do that. And so those are my requests and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. A lot of them, I agree with you on, Wes, I'm behind you. Mr. Brown.
Todd, when you mentioned that four point two million dollars, that money hasn't been earmarked for anything yet. Is that correct?
Correct. We will be presenting.
Correct. We will be presenting a plan to council. Okay. With some of these priorities such as Oak Lane or Stormwater, since it's infrastructure, that money could be used and some of these things that we're talking about could be, could they be expedited? Or since they're, they're not? We don't, can they be expedited is what I'm asking.
Yeah. We don't know for sure when we're going to be getting that first tranche of that money. John, would you like to talk about Oak Lane, how you're planning for?
Um, one thing we do know, and we, we staff, we are inundated with emails from different entities telling us when we might get the money, what we could do with the money, who wants to watch our money, you know, the whole thing. But one thing we do know is the bulk of these, of this money for a lot of cities are going to be using for wastewater, wastewater and stormwater projects. So if you looked at Oak Lane and, 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 um, I'm not the expert here on this, but I think Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore is sitting behind me or, or Mr., uh,
He is. He's, he's looking right at you.
Anyway, what I was going to say is if there is a stormwater element to this, and this is put on this schedule when we have to identify to the state and to whoever, because we have to justify how these projects, this money's going to be used and what have you. And when council blesses that, then if it has a stormwater element, then we're yet to see how much of that we're going to be able to use for that project. But I would say if it's stormwater related or wastewater related, I think we're going to be in pretty, pretty good shape. And when you look at four point two million dollars, you know, we would be looking at, I would hope, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn here. Uh, but I would hope that these, these, these folks that are being flooded on these roads. And if an engineering study has to be done and the grade of the road has to be changed or something has to be done, that could cost a million dollars right there, depending on what it is. But that would seem like something that's going to qualify for this. And somebody asks, who, well, when would that money be able to be spent? When that money is received and, and staff identifies it to you on where we think the problem areas are and council agrees or council tells us, well, of course blesses where they want that money to be spent. Soon as that money's in that bank account, we get the contractors lined up or whatever, we can start spending that money. Okay. This money has nothing to do with this budget.
Right.
This money has nothing to do.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, John. So you said you, you don't know when you're getting the money, but the four point two, you know, you will get.
We are going to get four point two million dollars unless somebody is, is just extremely, extremely lying to me every month. Because we're going to be get this, we're going to get this money. Um, I would hope the money would start coming within the next thirty days. I think the biggest stumbling block right here is now, I just already, I just got a message for cities who have over fifty thousand, uh, a population over fifty thousand, they're already starting to get the money coming to them. Well, we're considered what's called an NEU. So we're smaller cities and the money comes through the state. So we expect though, that we should be getting this money, you know, rather quickly. And I think what's happening here is the documentation and the rules and, and the reporting requirements for this, that's what needs to be spelled, spelled out. This money is sitting there in the coffers or whatever. Somebody just give us the applications and the paperwork and whatever. And my staff will work quickly over, you know, every night to get this money out there and, uh, have council approve it and let's start working on these projects.
Since we do know the money is coming and I think.
The money, the money is coming.
And I'm pretty sure that council, from what I hear is probably consensus, they want all these things done. So if the money's going to be there and you know it's going to be there, but you don't know when it's coming, can we go ahead and do something about it? If with council's approval, of course. But these things kind of need to be taken care of expeditiously.
Yes. And we've, we're already starting the first step of that, which is Councilmember Morrison talked about is gathering the data. Let's find out exactly what the problem is, what it's going to take to fix it. And I'm talking about the center street basin, Fillmore Avenue and the other streets that are, uh, related to that. Once we get that data, which we're already working towards, then we'll be able to put a plan together and see how much money it's going to cost. And this could very well potentially be used for that. I think that's a good plan, actually.
But something like these streets are flooding, having a portable pump or something that's available right when the rain starts. Because from the history, we know that the areas that are, are the worst areas. Yeah. So we could do something, uh, prior to proactive to prevent this or at least tone it down some.
Yeah, it's, it's out there right now, Jim. It's still out there on Center Street. We're ready to go, uh, at a moment's notice. Uh, if we get a heavy rain, we'll be monitoring for that.
Okay. Um, Oak Lane, I think there's money in that. I think, um, Mickey has spoke to, did you speak to all the residents in Oak Lane or were still a couple that you didn't speak to?
Couple that, um, I spoke to a majority and, um, on the phone or in person, and they want it done. There's a few that don't. There's, um, one couple that are in California, but he is, he's coming around. And when I explained to him that the city is willing to work with the residents there and do exactly what they want. We're trying to get the French drain in, in front of the restaurant there. So that will stop flooding. And some kind of pavement for the people that live down there for public safety as well as their cars every day. And, um, that's the main purpose. So even if we did it in phases, you know, they would be, I'm sure for that. But you know, like when we weren't to the strategic planning, we didn't know how the residents felt. So it wasn't one of our priorities. But like I said, it's not a new project.
Right.
It's been on the books for a long time. And I, I just think that we need to help the business.
Right.
And, uh, you know, do what we can to, to alleviate the stormwater runoff there.
And Todd, I know you don't have the figures, but I mean, it would count, would that be something Jeff would say, what are we, you know?
For Oak Lane?
Yeah.
Um, Jim, do you have, or maybe John, you have some preliminary numbers. So there's going to be a, a design cost for Oak Lane. And then there's going to be putting it out to bid for the construction. Do we have some preliminary numbers on that?
Just a second. We, we, we do have some preliminary numbers on Oak Lane.
Jim, did you want to talk to that too? Could you come up to the microphone, please?
I think the original quote that would, would bid originally was like seven hundred thousand. But you have to keep in mind, there's a stormwater issue that's involved with this property on Oak Lane. There's nowhere to put the stormwater. You tell you, the property behind it is, is owned by another person. So you'd have to purchase that property or purchase easement to run the water to the central ditch. So that, that will create another issue.
Well, on page ninety-seven of this, it says the Oak Lane improvements, four hundred fifty-one thousand with a, a bid process of fifteen hundred dollars. So.
Yeah, that was on the, I think that was from two thousand sixteen.
Oh.
That's quite a few years ago.
That was, excuse me, Jim, that, yeah, Jim's right. That was a prior. But, um, and, uh, Mr. Ratliff's, um, uh, not in, not in the, the office right now. Um, but the four hundred fifty thousand, from what I understand, is in terms of the construction and the paving, whatever, it's going to be in that ballpark of four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand. We do know, we do know that. Um, but now what Jim's talking about in addition to, now that's a whole other part of the ballgame. Now, if that's going to deal with the stormwater and what have you, then that could be where the reuse money will be able to be used. It could qualify for that. And I, I think that's, that's a big plus for us. But, and as you could see, is that slated for twenty-two, twenty-three in, um, the construction and the paving and the, on Oak Lane. That's for, um, next year, not, not this coming year. Go ahead.
I also want to add that under the stormwater CIP, we also have, um, Oak Lane improvements included there for that stormwater section. And now we have twenty-five thousand this year and a hundred thousand for next year. So that's, so we do have around six hundred or so thousand that we're allocating to this project currently.
But not, just not this year.
Well, the, the, no, the, the four hundred fifty thousand is not, is not a part of this year's budget. No. And, and I'll just, and let me just make a comment for clarification, this, and this will get the council in their thinking in the right direction, you know, and this is, you know, when we came in and, and, and set, we've been very fortunate in the city that we could actually, in the last couple of years, just start out and say, we're going to go with the rollback rate. I mean, we're very fortunate there because when we say we're going to go with the rollback rate, what has happened is the city manager and staff has taken in consideration, based on what's happening to the year with the strategic retreats and everything else, other projects that, that the city wants to do, council wants to do. We've already figured that in. So that allows myself as the finance director to say, you know what? We're safe to start off at the rollback rate and stay away from, we, we could have said, if the rollback rate is say, three point five, we, we could have came in here and said, you know what? We, we want to start off with our proposed rate at four point three. Well, that might've given us an extra four hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes. But we don't operate like that in the city here because we're more citizen oriented than we are, you know, or, um, than we are money oriented in the sense that we're getting everything done we want to get. So I bring it right back to the rollback rate because that serves the city, uh, and that the citizens the best. And then there's not a big deliberation in here for hours saying, well, geez, you know, you know, uh, we want the four hundred fifty. And then somebody else says, no, we don't. So that, starting right back at roll, uh, uh, rollback expedites this process. But knowing that we've covered everything council has asked us to do during the year. And I, I just wanted to qualify that. Okay. Um, but there's no extra money in this budget to do any extra. But there's no extra money in this budget to do any extra projects unless council decided that they want to do something different.
John.
And, and, and basically, and basically take something.
Yeah. The simple way to look at it is, we've provided for everything from the strategic planning retreat as the priorities. Uh, so we either bump that to one of those or more of those to make Oak Lane happen, or we look at a different military. We're fine with either and we'll present whatever you want. If this is a priority, we will make it happen. Uh, just tell us how, which way you want to go.
Well, I, I don't know, um, if we take something away, then we're going to be hurting. I know stormwater is important. I've always felt that we should do things. We have a lot of little different things in there that we are supposedly going to put into this budget, like the estuary park property, 220, 20 something thousand dollars it was. Are those necessity to where we can push that to next year and bring that fund back to?
What, what I would suggest council do if, if, uh, if there is a majority who feel we do need to prioritize Oak Lane construction in the next fiscal year, um, let staff work on that, come up with a plan. With, uh, the ideal solution would be staying at rollback. And see if we can massage some of the other priorities that were previously established from the retreat and present a plan to you that, okay, we can, we can afford to give that up and that up in exchange for this. Push those two things back, back to next year, kind of a thing. Uh, we'd be glad to work on that and massage it a little bit and present a plan at our next budget hearing.
The thing we, I, I was going to say, the only other thing we need to be careful with is, is we have projects that you would say, well, maybe we could delay those, but we got to be careful because if we have projects that have grants related to them, that's saving the city a lot of money. You wouldn't back off, say Long Point Estuary and say, well, you know, we'll forego the $300,000 grant we got because we want to complete Oak Lane. Those type of projects would be very hard. But the city manager is correct and we could look at every area. And if Oak Lane is a greater priority and this council decides that, we could very, we could very, um, easily adjust accordingly and push things out. I mean.
We'll find a way.
Well, if it gets issued down there, it'd be stormwater. Uh, we all know that. I think we all know that. There's no way to do it other than exfiltration or purchase property. That's the only way you're going to do it down there. It's always been a problem. And that's probably one of the biggest delays of, and been there waiting for the future build out down on the other end. But I don't, I don't only want Oak Lane, been wanting that for years, but we also have stormwater problems throughout the city that needs to be addressed, which to me is very important. Also, Oak Lane could maybe be done something just like, right? Five, six years ago, I asked to get it, just millings on it, just something to keep the mud from being there. That would be a quick fix to temporarily fix that problem that those people have done. And then the issue of taking the money from somewhere else to do this and do that, I would rather direct that to the flooding issues that we.
Now, the stormwater, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, but the stormwater fund, if you, if you look, it's very healthy. And we do, we could, we do have existing funds in contingency here. Actually, there's $400,000 there. That couldn't necessarily be used to pave a road, but it could be used for all the stormwater, stormwater items. And, um, and, and, and in the, in the interim, if we could ever get this reuse, uh, this recovery money or whatever, then the good thing about that is some of that money could be, we could track that money and then we could use those funds to replace, replenish, uh, the money that, that we have for stormwater. It's stormwater related. We know we could use it for stormwater. So I'm talking about the, yeah, yeah. You, if the project, well, hopefully that's, that's the thing. That's a good point. But the, but, but my thing is, is this, it's not like these projects would start in the next month or so. And I'm planning, I'm hoping that money's here in the next month or so.
Well, you're going to have to have engineering and all that business.
Yes, yes.
I know. I had a complaint yesterday or day before yesterday about the people at Casse Canaveral. They're starting to flood now. They're back, backyards and they're getting flooding into their house because of construction over on Madison, I believe. He said it was. So there's a problem. We got a problem throughout the city. I know Fillmore Avenue, that area has been there a long time. I was down there maybe two years ago, looked at that and throughout the whole city, there are spots. More in court, we got a problem on more in court. People got a little problem up there. There's just little places all over the city that need attention. So.
I, I think staff could take a, a, a hard look at this and, um, trust me, we're no different than the people sitting in this audience. We, we have homes and we live in places too. And if we're flooding, that truly, you know, we could do whatever we could to make it a priority to, to, to locate, you know, to locate that money or, or move money around because, I mean, every time it storms.
Brainstorm now. That's, you know, you all know where to brainstorm.
I have a couple of comments to make.
Oh, you're here tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I think, I just want to, I'll, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. Uh, I just think that the safety and security of our residents is our number one priority. And I do think the stormwater issue has to receive just, you know, the just awards for this, definitely. And we, we will work that out. Definitely. I do want to say something to the Oak Lane people about sidewalks. I don't think you have to worry about it because people on the presidential streets have been waiting 60 years to get a sidewalk. So, uh, just FYI, I don't know if you know that, if you've been around long enough. So don't worry about sidewalks. You'll get in line maybe in 60 years. The other comment that I have on the Transportation Policy Committee meeting and Intergovernmental Affairs, I received information today and under the state projects, because they had the director come from the DOT that we are on for the A1A for 21, 22. So we have moved up and that was in a little box of Brevard County. I didn't bring that along with me. But rest assured, I'm on it. I will go to the policy committee meeting once again. I think August 12th at one o'clock at the Marriott. And I will be there for that one. So, um, I'm on it. And as I said, the director gave that whole chart. And I, did I send that to you, Todd? But I will. If I didn't send it to you, I will send it to you. So I'm very happy about that. And I think lots of our projects are great, but it is true that we can get rid of some of the fluff and take care of the necessities, flooding, stormwater. That's probably our number one priority at this point. Thank you.
Okay, we're about coming up on six o'clock. I'm going to let, Todd, oh, you have something?
I just have one more thing to say. I think that, um, you know, we're doing a lot of great projects and hopefully staff can find some money for Oak Lane as well as the flooding is really very important. But you know, the 900,000 that we're spending on the promenade, which is important. But it's one of the nicest buildings as far as blight goes in the city. And I think that 900,000 maybe this year could be spent on things that we need as for flooding and paving and that. And maybe the market will adjust and the price won't be so high. I mean, he just repaved the front and the back of it and.
I think it's important to note though, not, you don't want to mislead, mislead the, uh, the council or the audience. Here's, here's the thing. The 900K that if we've got it for 900K or a million dollars for this, uh, building over here, it's because it was approved at the strategic retreat, it's in the budget as an expense. But also in the budget as an expense is the city didn't have just a 900,000 or a million dollars to, uh, to cover that. So in, in this budget too, is a 1.2 million dollar, loan that we would have to go get to cover that. And that was, that was explained to council. So it's not as easy as just taking that out. We could take that out, but then we take the loan out too. So the loan's gone too. Which could leave a couple hundred, hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we lose in the general fund. But we could, we could, we can massage that and, 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 uh, and, and cover that. But I don't, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that we just get rid of the $900,000 and it's available. No, we, the only reason we were going to get the promenade is because you'd approved that we could get a 1.2 million dollar loan. So I just want to make that clear. Okay?
And it may only be a one-time opportunity.
Right.
It may just be there at six o'clock.
But I got one comment. Mr. Mayor, if you, do we need to move? I do like the city manager's recommendation to do the budget workshop for the August 17th placeholder so that staff can bring back and we can adjourn. Okay. I move that we confirm the eight, August 17th, 2021 budget workshop at five o'clock PM.
I'll second.
Hold the role, please.
Councilmember Brown. Mayor Hoag. Councilmember Kellam. Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our budget workshop. We're going to take a short break and then we're going to start probably 10 minutes, let's say 10 minutes. We'll start a little later, maybe earlier.